Now opening a work session for January 20th, 2015. First item of discussion is the elected school board discussion. I know it's been a, it appears to be somewhat of a contentious issue as of right now, but all we're trying to do is try to see where the middle ground might be and what the council wants to do regarding this. I think as one of the, one of the gentleman that spoke on the, during the public hearing said, the idea was that we may want to move this forward to allow the public to make a decision on this. It is not, I don't think the council's understanding that we want to make that decision as a council, but entertaining, you know, discussion at any point in time on who would like to lead this.
Guess it's only contentious if you don't agree with it.
Yeah. Councilman Kilmer, you prepared a lot of work ahead of time for this, and we appreciate it. Is there any comments you would like to make as introduction?
Well, I mean, I appreciate you putting this, putting this on our work session. I know this was a busy day. We're going to be here for a while, so, so thank you for doing that. I mean, I've, you know, heard a lot about this, knocking on doors and talking to people in the community, and so I, you know, people seem to want us to move forward with doing something this year. Now, I don't know exactly what the schedule is for trying to get something done in the general assembly, since we can't, the council can only make a recommendation to the general assembly, and they have to pass a law, as I, as I understand it. So, I've been told by legislators that they would like something as specific as possible from us, in terms of how we want to set up the board, not just, we want an elected school board. But I guess we have to figure out what, what we would like to endorse, and then would we send a letter? Is that what we would do? And the executive would sign it? I mean, I'm not sure that, the procedure.
That's, that's a good question, and legally, as far as legal is concerned, Mr. Baker, I would, as I understand it, we can send a letter as a request to have Annapolis introduce this. How descriptive does that have to be, as opposed to a resolution? How descriptive does Annapolis need that to be?
Are you talking about the question of this ballot question on it, or actually the elected school board itself?
Well, asking them to, to, to introduce a bill that would allow the idea of an elected school board to be put on the ballot for the public? Do they also need definitions such as districts? Other issues concerning that?
It's whatever the delegation would want. Last time, they went back and forth about having different questions put on there about different types of school boards, or it could be just the same, just a simple question of, do you want an elected school board? And then let that be hashed out afterwards.
When you say that could be hashed out afterwards, when does that get hashed out?
If the ballot, if they had a ballot, and the majority of the people favored an elected school board, then you could come back and go through a hearing process and come out with what your suggestion is of an elected school board.
Well...
But if you go back to Mr. Kilmer's position, I think you're talking about skipping the straw ballot and just going to an elected school board, in which case you need the detail.
Well, and it would, and it'd be, I think, what Carroll County, or Caroline County, one of those, Carroll, forgive me, people up there. What they did is they, the legislature passed something that established an elected school board, that then the voters voted to approve or disapprove that proposal. I mean, I think that would skip a lot of the, having to revisit this again and again and again, is that if the general assembly can pass something, it would say that Wycom County would have an elected school board, subject to the approval of the voters in 2016. What, you know, how, how would, would that, you know, what legally would we need to do to do that?
I would anticipate that you would need the, all the details of what constitutes elected school board, how many people, your term, the guideline.
Councilman Kilmer presented, presented a letter from December 31st with some bullet points, about seven bullet points that I thought were rather pertinent to the, to the topic, such as he had suggested in here, the idea of whether or not we had to consider nonpartisan elections, whether it would be seven members elected of four terms. The election districts, he suggested, would be the same as our current council-matic districts. It's your letter, why don't you read it? It's your letter.
You're doing a good, I mean, yeah, I mean, you basically covered it.
I left off with election, election districts. Mark?
Yeah, I mean, open to any registered voter, vacancies filled by the county executive with occurrence of the county council. If a vacancy occurs in the first two years, the school board members term, you have a special election during the presidential election year to fill that term. And those are what a couple of other counties do to fill vacancies. Because, I mean, I have heard the objection that they're, well, when we have a school board election, sometimes people don't show up to run. So, you know, we have to consider what happens in that case, who fills the vacancies, and things like that. So, kind of being prepared for all the contingencies. And if another county has the executive fill the vacancies, I don't know why we shouldn't be able to do that, too. And if they have special elections, when there's a vacancy, for a long-term vacancy, I think that's better to do that than just have an appointed person serve for three years. That's, you know, that's what another county does, too, so.
Didn't I say a letter where we had to have something by the 22nd, from Jim Mathias?
Yes, yes. Today's the 20th, and if we do this, we'd have to have some type of draw, some type of consensus today. And that being said, that we would have to instruct the legal department to move forward.
Are we going to move, are we, are we away from the straw vote now? Or we're not going to consider the straw vote, we're going to move toward an elected school board? What are we going to do?
That would be council decision as to whether or not we want to take this to a straw vote, or whether we want, at the day of polling, we want them to vote yes or no for the opinion.
Don't you think we need to do that right now? Get that straight before, before we discuss the...
Sure.
Opinions from council members as to straw vote versus an actual vote?
Well, like I pointed out during council comments, my unofficial poll and talking to people in the public, I do believe that the majority of the people are interested in an elected school board.
So you would be in favor of, of taking it to the, on, on, I guess, 2016, would it be?
Yes, 2016.
Taking it to ballot and not, not...
Would be a transition to 2016.
And not a straw vote, but you're talking about an actual vote?
Yes or no.
Yes, yes, up or down. Councilman Davis?
Well, we're voting on the day. It doesn't, it's not to be specific as what type of a board it will be, it's just that we're wanting...
Right now, we're just trying to decide from a council perspective as to whether, if we were to decide and elect to, to move this forward, to have the general assembly put, approve us putting on the ballot, an elected school board issue, whether it would be to vote for an elected school board, or to take a straw vote to get a temperature, the temperature of the constituents.
We're going to referendum.
We're trying to decide whether or not it's going to be actually a straw vote, or whether it's going to be the actual vote.
So either way, the voters will either vote up or down on whatever we decide?
Right, but it'll be a done deal, or else it'll be...
It's going to extend it another two years.
That's another way to look at it, as Mr. Holloway just said. There are two ways this has been talked about. Previously, it had been talked about, and folks from the audience spoke to this this morning, suggesting that there be a straw vote taken, so that everyone will know the, the perspective of the majority of voters. An argument against that, in the, during the previous council term, was that, well, what kind of an elected board of education would we building, be voting we're in favor of? This doesn't say, it just says, would you like to have an elected school board, or would you not like to have an elected school board? The, and, and taking that approach, I'm not proposing or opposing, just simply trying to point out the distinctions. If the straw vote process is taken, it's a two-year process. That election would take place in 2016. If the majority of voters favored an elected school board, then the type of school board would have to be fashioned and put before the voters again in two more years.
So if we want to do this by the 22nd, we need to decide that today?
If, if you, you have to decide what you want to put forth to the, Annapolis delegation by the 22nd. If it's simply a straw vote, that's, that's the easiest thing to put forth, not necessarily the best thing to put forth. The second approach, which Mr. Kilmer has outlined, based on the, the experience of other counties in the state, who have fashioned either, a fully elected board, voted by the residents of the county, either, either by districts, or at-large, or a combination of both, and there's that, that exists among other counties, both of those models exist among other counties. There is also discussion, and there is, there are examples in other parts of the state of hybrid boards. Hybrid boards would be a certain number elected, and a certain number appointed by the governor. There are even variations in that, because in Prince George's County, through recent legislation, it took, took, took effect in 2013, there are elected members by district, there are elected members at large, and there are appointed members, some by the county executive, and at least one case, the council person was appointed by the president of the Prince George's County Council. So, that's one type of hybrid vote. In other, in other counties, certain members of the board are elected by the people of the county, and a number are appointed by the governor. In Wycomico County, when this, this debate took place last time, you may recall that there were those who supported a hybrid, in the interest of assuring greater diversity on the Board of Education, that an elected board might not be as diverse as a board which was appointed, or at least partially appointed. When I spoke to the county administrator in one of the upper shore counties that has a hybrid form, I believe it was Caroline, I asked him the reason for that, and he said the debate was largely to assure greater diversity. So, Harford County is another county that has a hybrid board. I, I believe, in, in some, in the view of some people, the hybrid choice in, in Harford County was to assure greater diversity as well. Whether or not it does, I, I don't know, but that was the thought.
Question I have, Mr. Baker, this really has to come down to legal. We need to know what Annapolis needs, in order for us to know what proper vote to take today. And we could all vote for an elected school board to go to the ballot today. We, we need to know if we will have enough information for the general assembly by Thursday, whether you have enough to give to them for them to put it on the floor.
I think, put it the simplest way is, yes, whatever you decide today, we can get the information they need.
Do you have to have the defined districts? Are they going to be expecting to see the, the complete breakdown? Because we don't have any of that right now.
That goes back to a decision as to what you're going to ask Annapolis to do. If you're only going to ask for the straw ballot, then it doesn't, doesn't make any difference what the districts are going to be, how many people you're going to have, what the terms are going to be, it's just going to be a question of, do you want an elected school board? That's a simple, one-page request.
If we don't want a straw ballot, if we want it to be a vote taken by the public, does that mean that at the day that that vote is taken, that it'll be enacted immediately? Because we need to know, we need to know where the gaps are, we need to know if they need to be filled now, or if we, if we would have time to fill them between now and when, when it goes to the polls.
It depends on how, it depends on how you write, how the bill is written. In Baldur County, for example, which is, which is currently an entirely appointed Board of Education, there is a, the, the bill that was passed in Annapolis prescribes for a phased-in change, that this member will be elected in such a year, this member will be elected in such a year, and by 2018, the entire, the entire board will have changed.
Well, the question is, do we have to have that information today, in order to send that to the general assembly by Thursday, or is that something we can work on between Thursday and the end of the session?
If you can come to a decision of what you want to do. Mr. Kilmer has laid out a hypothetical situation where he, he suggests that council, that there be five members of the Board of Education, I'm, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, just tell me if I'm wrong, five members of the Board of Education, one each elected from each of the council-matic election districts. That's usually the process that's used in other counties, that where there are election districts for members of the county council, those same districts are used to elect members of the Board of Education. Then if you choose, if you, if, if it is your thinking that the balance of the board membership be elected at large, you would say that. If you were to decide that the balance would be elected or appointed by some other means, you would say that in your letter, in your instructions to the...
We need to get over this one first.
In your instructions to the delegation. But those are the things that the council would need to decide before law could send a definitive letter to Annapolis.
You got to get through the, whether you want it straw vote, or a full board, or vote for a board yet, with not finished that vote yet.
That's part of the discussion. I mean, if, if this legislation as a, as a binding vote, if we take that, if we make that decision now, we need to know whether we even have the, the tools in place for the introduction of legislation to Annapolis. We, we could vote on it, but if we don't send them anything, if we could vote on it and just call them and say, hey, here's what we want to do.
What I'm saying, we haven't decided as a, as a council yet. Larry's the only one that's really voted, whether we want a straw vote or a full vote. We need to decide that now.
Right.
And then when we get done deciding that, then, if, if we decide we want a straw vote, we don't have any problems today. We just send...
Okay, I see where you're headed.
You see, if we, we've got to decide that first, that's, that's got to be done.
All right. What did you say, Larry, straw or no straw?
Um, I, I said that the people, the will of the people want us to go ahead and make a vote on an elected school board.
Okay, so...
That is what I'm hearing.
Okay, so it's no straw.
I say straw vote, because, I mean, we're sitting here making decisions for some of the people that aren't in here, you know what I mean? They might have a totally different opinion. And for us to sit here and say, we want a school board for the county, I mean, we're making that decision as a, as a whole, let the county, let the voters...
The voters will decide, but the question is whether we make it binding or not on this, on two, in 2016, when it does go to the, to the polls.
They can vote no.
They could vote no, but the question here is whether we want it to be binding, or whether we want it to be a straw vote.
I said straw vote.
No straw vote.
No. John?
Straw vote.
Mark?
Referendum, no straw vote.
No straw vote. Matt?
Well, the, the folks that we did have here today to speak, at least three of them wanted a yes/no vote. So is that termed as a straw vote?
No, a yes/no vote, I think, is no, they didn't want a straw vote, they wanted to move forward with it and get it done, to allow the public to, to vote and for it to be in effect.
Okay. I'll go just a straight yes/no vote.
Okay, so the majority is for, to move forward without a straw vote? That's the majority?
Now we got to decide...
Whether we can even do it?
Well, we can do it, but we've got to decide, I mean, we can do this today, we've got to decide the structure. That's what we need to decide, is the structure.
And I believe that's the work that Mark Kilmer, Councilman Kilmer, has been working on, and there's no need to reinvent the wheel. I think he's done a lot of work and got the background, just have to finish it.
Well, I think a lot of the key points that we, that are in discussion and valid are the ones from this, again, the December six, the December 31st letter that I referenced. Mr. Baker, is there sufficient information here for you to put together what you would consider?
On which letter?
December 31st, a letter from Councilman Kilmer.
Flip it over.
Of December 31st. The question would be, by taking this information and whatever other points the council might make today, is that enough for you to, you know, fashion a document that you think would be sufficient for the general, for the legislature?
Uh, yes, I, I mean, if I go all the way back, excuse me, since I was, lived through the discussion once before, I had already prepared a bill last time. And following the same format that most of the other jurisdictions follow, I had that the board consists of seven members, which is what it does now. To be qualified for membership on the board, you have to be a resident for a year, you have to be a registered voter. You have to live within the district from which you're elected. Okay, and that's a, that's a throwaway. An individual who is subject to the authority of the county board may not be appointed, that's an ethical issue. Everybody be elected at the general election, one member from each of the five council member districts, two members at large. The one point that I added, I think that Mr. Kilmer raised, is whether or not it's going to be a nonpartisan election. Each party, each member would serve a term of four years, beginning on the third Monday. And the third Monday is a legal holiday, goes to the next day. One point for discussion again is that I had a governor show a point a member to fill any vacancy. It's been referenced that that might want to be the county executive.
I don't think.
And if you, members eligible for reappointment, which can't serve more than two consecutive terms, and then it has removal provisions, which are fairly standard among all of them. I can go over those. Immortality, misconduct, incompetence, willful neglect, and a right to a hearing if they want to be removed. Those are essentially the points that are covered in almost all the elected school boards.
So our first structure will be five from districts and two from at-large?
Correct.
That's our first structure we have to decide on, is...
That's one option.
That's a, that's a first structure, one option. So, do we want to do it like that? Go through different options and see who supports what? I'm okay with a nonpartisan thing. I don't like it particularly, but...
I think we need to discuss the hybrid form as well, and particularly with what Mr. Kramer pointed out, that one county chose a hybrid method to make, to ensure diversity on the Board of Ed. I think you can look at our council here and see that there may be an issue in the county with getting diversity on Board of Education. I think, you know, it's something that we strongly need to consider here, and see if that is, is a answer to, you know, that, that issue.
Any comments?
I agree with Matt. I think there is an issue with diversity.
Well, I think that, I mean, the structure that we have now, if we're, if we felt that that you needed to have a hybrid for the Board of Education, then in a sense, you'd be saying we should have a hybrid for the council itself.
I'm thinking if it works for the council, why wasn't it, why won't it work for the Board then? It seems to work for the council, I mean...
Still the will of people.
If, if we did have a hybrid, who would, who would you want to appoint? Would you want the governor, would you want the county executive?
That's a good point.
I like local. Yeah.
I think the reason that this has come about, as far as an elected begin with, because the voters did want more input. They didn't like the fact, really, that the appointments were made by the governor's office, and they felt there should be more accountability to the public on every single level.
And as I mentioned, I've mentioned to some others in here, I think in Prince George's County, they went from an elected back to a hybrid. I mean, if there were issues with diversity or other things like that, I mean, this, it, it could be changed to a hybrid if that were concerned. I mean, the legislature could change the school board every year, i- if they want. I mean, that's, that's, this isn't, this wouldn't be set in stone necessarily.
As one of the previous speakers said, I like the idea of keeping it simple.
Very true. Any other comments on hybrid versus...
Well, after the hybrid, I do want to make a comment.
Okay. Because we're going to have to have a consensus on whether we're looking to have a hybrid, or whether having completely...
And I'm not interested in a hybrid.
No?
No hybrid.
Councilman Davis?
I, I'm pretty much interested in it, because my problem is that we're sitting here making decisions for the people right now, without their input. I wasn't here.
Yeah, we've had a lot of input. Over the years, I'm sorry, I'm not sorry you didn't try to bring it up, but over the years, we've had a lot of input.
Well, Mr. President, if, that concerns me, too, the fact that we're not having a public hearing on this. I know that will concern Senator Mathias, he said as much. But I also understand our deadline. Could we send something up by Thursday, and then have a public hearing on...
The format?
Well, do a public hearing on, on February 3rd, whatever, wherever our next meeting is, to see what the public thinks about this, if they, I mean, that would be useful for the legislature to be, because legislature can change anything we send them, to be frank.
Well, you could also, you could also request a poll.
What's that?
The county could request that the legislators poll it, if, if, if something happened.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I, I understand, I mean, I, you know, if we want to get something up this year, we have to do it now. I understand that, and I appreciate you making that happen. I'm not, I'm not criticizing you anyway for that, but I, I do think that if we don't have a public hearing, and, you know, especially at a night meeting, we're going to, you know, Senator Mathias or some others will say, sorry, there's no public input on this, I'm not supporting it. I, I think we've heard as much.
We've, we've had public input for years, Mark. We've had several public hearings on it. I mean, I'm not trying to say that we don't need another.
Well, how about, how about if we did a hybrid with local, local, like, I guess Matt, Matt brought up. I'm not in favor of a hybrid, that particular, I'd like to see it elected. I mean, I, I feel personally, you know, they're spending the taxpayers' dollars, they, they need to get out there and work, if they're interested in being on that, on that board, they need to work for it a little bit, to show their interests. So, that's why I don't care for the hybrid. It has nothing to do with diversity or not diversity. It has to do with the person's interest to be on that, on that school board. It's like the interest of being on this council. You need to get out there, tell people that you're interested. But I would, I would, I would go along with a hybrid board if it could be locally appointed, say by the county executive.
Right.
That, that would suit me. I mean, I would bend that way to, to get this done in a timely fashion, I think, is the way I'm looking at it.
Can you have a locally appointed school board, Mr. Baker, without having approval from the state?
I'm talking about just the other two now.
I understand.
It can be done if the legislature will approve the bill.
The two at-large positions, potentially.
Two at-large positions, yeah. Be locally, you know, by the county executive.
Could it be an option with the vote? Have a, a straight seven-member vote, or with the option of one or the other adding a hybrid to it?
I think we need to send something up in stone, so they know what we want.
Well, I, I totally agree.
I mean, so there's no confusion up there, you know?
So you're suggesting a hybrid board?
With local, with local appointment, from the two members? That's just a suggestion. I mean, I'd go along with that, for, you know, I'd rather not have a hybrid board. I'd rather, I'd rather it be all elected, because I do feel that the people that's going to serve on the Board of Education need to show their interest by getting out and running for election. But to move it along and to hopefully get it passed, I think that we could go with a hybrid, as long as we had local, local point of input.
Well, it could be, send them a letter saying we support an elected board, and then if the public comments, if we do have a hearing, the public comments strongly support a hybrid board, then send them a quick note and say, go ahead and change this? I mean, is that, would that, I mean, I mean, because I, I doubt they're going to act on it by February 3rd. I think they want to have something to get it in motion at, at the legislature, from what I understand. But I would be, I'd be very surprised if they pass out a committee and pass both houses by February, February 3rd.
Yeah, they could always do an amendment to the bill, yeah.
I think we have time.
Yeah, yeah, so if we send up something today, support some elected school board, then we have a public hearing, and the, the public, you know, the, the comments seem to be strongly in favor of that, some sort of hybrid, then, then we could always change it then. Yeah, I'm just throwing something out here, I don't know if that's possible or what. But I, I don't know, would you be open to having a public hearing on?
Oh, certainly, yeah, we have to.
Oh, okay, okay.
You know, my, my feeling is that when the legislator says we send something up, they think that we made a decision on it based on irrational capabilities. And when we waffle on it, and when we flip back and forth and say, "Well, this isn't really what we want, we want to change it," there's going to be less inclination to go ahead and.
I think it needs to be set in stone.
I think so.
Well, they, I, I understand, and I would prefer to wait until we have a public hearing to send it, but the time limits are such that we can't be handed. So I, I, I'm with you, I'm in a perfect place, I'm with you, but, you know, they, they want it by Thursday, so.
Well, in any case, I'm in favor of a hybrid.
Well, that's all I wanted to.
But that narrows it down a little bit.
Well, in any case, I'm in favor of a straight elected, so they got John, so.
So, in, in discussion with a hybrid, I guess the idea would be to keep it in, in the line of thinking that it would be appointed by a local, local appointment. So we'll, we'll revisit that, Councilman Dodd.
I'm going with the majority, whatever you guys want.
Give us your opinion.
Keep it simple.
Keep it simple, he's, he's for no hybrid. Councilman Davis, hybrid, local? Councilman Holloway?
Yeah, I'd go with a hybrid, local.
Hybrid, local?
Yes.
Fully elected?
Hybrid, local.
Okay, we have a majority of hybrid, local.
I would, I would like to see it completely elected, but we have a majority of hybrid locals, so that's, that's where we are.
And I'm not going to change my vote, but I'd like to see it fully elected too, but I, I think local appointment would be better than the governor appointing. And I'd like to see us get an elected school board.
Sure, I'd like to speak to that, you know, we have a number of good people that have served on our Board of Education in the past number of years. And I've talked to those people. And to a person, I've found that they would not have run for office if we hadn't elected school board. They were only there because they were appointed. And I think that when we got a hybrid, if we get a hybrid local, the local people are going to be people who are quality people in the community.
When I'm saying local, I mean, we have a local, in other words, a county executive appointed, but I know the people are going to be, people are going to be local. You know, they've got to be citizens, yeah, yeah, okay.
Local people are appointed by the county executive, but, you know, the people that did serve in the past would not have run if it were an elected office.
Well, different things motivate people to run, you know, I mean, so we'll, it'll be interesting to see who does run, you know.
Well, to that point, there were some people that were on the, that, that would have liked to serve on the school board, but never would get appointed, so. So, you know, so, yeah, I mean, so you missed it on quality that way too.
Councilman Dodd?
I, I would like to add on what Councilman Hall said, nobody mentioned it earlier, and it probably should have been mentioned. This has nothing to do with the current sitting board members, I think we have some excellent board members. They do have the children in their heart, and they're doing a great job right now, so again, it doesn't have nothing to do with the current sitting board members.
All right, I think we're just, we're just doing what I think the public has really requested. I don't think it's a personal opinion of anybody here, it is what's been asked of us by the, by the constituency. A point.
Before you leave hybrid, how do you interpret local appointment? County executive or county executive with consent of the council?
That's what I was just getting ready to say.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, yeah.
Sort of goes without saying, it would be with council approval.
Yeah, with council approval, yeah.
Any other discussion, it seems like that's, I think that's an interesting compromise.
Send a letter up?
The only other issue was whether or not the election would be nonpartisan.
I think so. Everybody all right with that?
I think that's easy enough, yes. Anybody? General agreement?
Wayne's got a question.
Yes, sir.
Ed, can that be prepared by the end of the day today? We're in Annapolis tomorrow for the legislative committee. If it could be completed today, it could be signed and we could hand deliver it tomorrow.
Sounds good.
Right?
See how easy it is when you sit down and make a decision.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Strasburg, do you, do you think the executive will support?
Yes.
That has, that has been an issue in the past.
Well, you just enlarged the executive's powers.
That's right. Any, any further discussion on this, if, if not, then we will take a vote just as a consensus only, as to, to send, to give Mr. Baker, to give the legal department the authority to prepare the documentation necessary. All those, yes.
Another administrative question, or if, if by, if this is done by consensus, or if you go back into a legislative session and, and vote to send a letter, you can do that either way. Going back into legislative session and, and concurring to write a letter thus and so is better for the public record. And then I would ask you, since this is going to be hand carried to Annapolis tomorrow, it would be administratively easier to get one signature on the letter. It would have a, a greater appeared effect if all members signed it. If, if you all want to sign it, please make yourselves available this afternoon for us to catch up with you.
Okay, let's do that.
So one signature representing the council?
No, I think.
No, all.
All of us?
All sign.
Okay.
It's all signed.
I think we'll do it in a work session as a consensus. Then we would have a public hearing on the 3rd, February 3rd, I believe it is. And at that point in time, I think we could actually maybe have a more formal resolution, giving it to council, council's blessing.
Well, you're blessing something that you've already delivered to the.
Or an open legislation, I just mean, I mean, I mean, I can go back into legislative, I mean, we can go back into legislative now.
Oh, no, I mean, you can do it on consensus and have the letter written and, and sign the letter, but I mean, to do it in formal resolution on the 3rd, you're doing a resolution on something you've already delivered to the.
I understand, it's just a matter of formality, I thought, and again, just to appease whatever concerns Mr. Kramer had expressed.
Oh, I think.
One, one's as good as the other, consensus.
Before, before you take anything else, would you want me to summarize what I have?
Yes.
Okay, the, the legislation would actually be to add a new section to Title III's subtitle V of the code. I think that's still the same. The board will consist of seven members, you have to be a resident of a year, a resident at least a year before the election, you have to be a registered voter. If you don't reside in the councilmatic district from which you're elected, you may not continue as a member of the board, I'll have to change that up a little bit. Okay, be five, it'll be seven members, five will be elected, one from each councilmatic district. Two members will be appointed by the county executive with county council approval. Election will be in a nonpartisan district, each member will serve for a term of four years, beginning on the 3rd Monday in December. The county executive shall appoint with council approval somebody to fill any vacancy on the appointed board. You can't serve more than two consecutive terms, and you can be removed from office for immorality, misconduct, incompetence, or willful neglect of duty after a hearing.
May I bring up another point? In most of the counties in which I've done research for you on this, where there has been a transition, there, the, the transition has been phased, just as, or, or, just as the current members of the Board of Education serve overlapping terms. The entire board does not all get replaced at the same time, they, they are staggered, they're staggered terms. Would, would you, would it be of interest for the council to have language to phase in the process from appointed to elected, so many in a year, so that by a certain date, every one of those who will be elected would be, would be elected?
So you say the first four, the first election, we have all new ones, and then let maybe three of them serve six years or eight years?
Well, typically what happens is they, it, it works the other way, they, the first, the first are for a shorter period, and then.
So we would have some elected members serving on the board that we currently have? Is that what you're saying?
If, if that's the way you wrote it, to phase, I'm only pointing it out to see if you have any concern about the, there being a phased-in transition. Baltimore County has written theirs, theirs is going to be, theirs is going to be phased in. I think, I know some others, but I only, I'm not advocating anything, I'm pointing out to you that the current, the current composition serve overlapping terms.
Well, I think you'll see some of that overlapping when some people don't run for a second term. And some people, they can only run for two terms anyway, according to this, right? So some people might run one term, or they might run two terms and not win, so you'll, you'll have some overlapping anyway, I think. The, the main parts, the main, the main problem's going to be, I don't know if you call it a problem, is at some point in time, you're going to have an old, all-new board when the elections make. That'd be the big step right there. And after that, I think you'll see some overlapping. Councilman Dodd?
To make a point, if this is passed by the General Assembly, it would go on the ballot in the 2016 election. And if the voters pass that ballot, the majority, the elections will begin in 2018 for the new elected school board?
I've got it drafted, so it goes into effect in 2016.
Oh, well.
I thought it was a vote.
Yeah, I'm, I, I, I thought the general consensus of the group was that to have this pass and then be subject to approval of the voters in 2016.
That was my question.
Yeah, which probably needs to be added to legislative language is, you know, so the voters can vote an up or down vote on this in 2016 to go into effect 2018. I think, I think that was our.
They'll run for election for 2018. They can't run for 2016 because they don't know if this thing's going to.
Right, it's an up or down vote.
If they vote on it in 2016, that's what, that's what we all thought, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so it'd be a referendum on this in 2016, the legislative, is that, you know, that's what another council, county did, was they, they passed it, the General Assembly passed it, and then the voters voted up or down on that legislation at the next election, and then it went into effect.
So then the, if they voted up, then it was not going to affect until 2018?
Exactly.
The election wouldn't until 2018.
They would follow our next election.
I would take input from the audience on a clarification only, point, but not as far as opinion, but you'd have to go to the mic if you don't mind. If we truly believe there may be others that know more about some things than we do.
Sorry, I'll be very brief, I didn't understand that you were going to be drawing up the dynamics of the, of the actual elected board today.
Tell us your name, please.
Sorry, my name is Thea Williams, I'm program coordinator of the Salisbury-Wycomico Youth Civics Council. I've not gotten the chance to meet all of you, the official first meeting of the council is on Wednesday and swearing in before the city is to be held on Monday. So I was hoping to bring this issue up when the council was officially sworn in, but, and this is just a matter of clarification. Will one of the appointed individuals be able to be a member of the youth, i.e. a student within the public county school systems as the majority of counties in the state of Maryland have? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Kilmer?
Yeah, I mean, some, a lot of the counts, a lot of the school boards do have a student member that's either appointed or elected, but I believe they're non-voting, is that correct? So there'd be a non-voting student member to offer input and things like that. So, I mean, so if we wanted to do a non-voting student member, it wouldn't replace one of the two appointees.
Right.
I mean, at least as far as I would.
I wouldn't see that as an issue we have to decide in, with any legislation for the General Assembly, it's just something that we could, we could allow. Mr. County?
No, I, I think the General Assembly has to.
They would have to approve a non-voting member?
Mr. Kilmer is correct about, I believe all the counties have at least a student member, Dorchester has two student members, probably because they have two high schools, I don't know. And another interesting point is that in Carroll County, the entire Board of County Commissioners serve as non-voting members of the Board of Education.
My question would be, I mean, as far as a student representative, I do, it, it is a student representative, I think that would be a policy we could accept as a council, I don't think that's necessary to.
There's currently non-voting members, I think it's represented from each of the schools, and they all sit at the desk with us, but they are non-voting members.
Right, I don't think that needs to be in state legislation, though, it's just as a courtesy.
If, if it does need to be in the legislation, are you agreeable to it being added?
Good question, I would be yes, anybody else?
If it has to be.
Are they paid?
No.
Okay. You've got to decide that. Well, it's nothing to laugh at, you got to, you know, it's got to be a decision. You've got a non-voting member, they could still be paid.
Okay, in agreement, okay. Again, it has to be a point of clarification, we can't take public hearings, it's just a point of clarification in case you feel the council has mis, you know, misinterpreted something, yes.
Good morning, Julie Bruington, Wycomico County, I just wanted to make a point of clarification regarding the phase-in. I think it would be important to have some existing members that have had some experience, and so that there should be a phased in. In other words, not all of the board members, I don't believe, should be reelected each election, because there should be some history that carries forward, in my opinion, I just want to make that clarification. Thank you.
Jim Jester, Wycomico County, I think my question was the same as she had, would the entire board be elected each time, or would you have phased in?
That's, we're trying to, we're trying to make that decision, yes, thank you, thank you.
I think staggered would be better, and if we just started with three elections, the first in 2018, and then in, what, 2000 and? Because it's every, would it be every four years, or would we do every two-year cycle?
Four years.
Okay, so then we do another two?
Another two.
In, in four years after that?
Is that going to complicate it, Mr. Baker?
Oh, yeah.
That's what I, that's what I'm trying to keep away from.
Yeah, because then you're going to have to decide which board member stays and who's, which district's going to get elected.
I say we get an elected board on, and then we worry about the staggering later. Staggering can be done at a later time.
Right.
But what do we do about the elimination of the entire board that's currently there?
It's going to happen.
Well, that does, they could be running, they could be running for office. They could be, they could be running for office, or two of them could be reappointed.
I guess two complicated matters. What could happen is after, if the voters approve this in 2016, if there are any vacancies in 2017 and 2018, those could be the two seats that the executive appoints. And then there could be the five elected on 2018, so the executive could appoint the ones in 2017 and 2018, and those people would stay on.
Just keep them on board?
Yeah, I mean, those could be just four-year terms, and the, they would come up every, whatever, 20, 2020 and 2021, you know, the, the, the executive would have those two that wouldn't, would be appointed kind of in two off-years, so if that staggering were an issue, maybe that could be a way to solve it, is the executive starts appointing in 2017 and 2018, and then those people stay on, and then a whole new batch of elected people come up in 2018.
Because the.
So you're short, who's filling those positions in the 17 and 18?
I, I, I'm not sure whose terms are up in 2017 and 2018.
Some we have to look into.
Yeah, I mean, and so this is not, again, not aimed at anybody, this is off the top of my head, but, but if staggering were an issue, and if you wanted continuity, that would be one way to do it without messing up the elections. Everybody, the elections would all happen at one time, but the appointments would happen on those two years.
Well, the boards are currently staggered.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it would be the same sort of staggering that's currently with the appointments, and so that would stay, and that would be a way to have continuity and solve the staggering problem.
We had the same issue with the council, I mean, we could have all new members sitting here, you know, and.
With a new county executive.
And I don't imagine, I don't, I don't know, I can't go back in history and tell you how many, but Matt's probably better at that. There's probably always somebody being reelected to, to, to carry on the history a little bit, like happened here. We could have a whole new council here, but we don't, you know.
The distinct, there's a distinction between boards of education and, and county elected officials. There's a distinction between boards of education and county elected officials. The Maryland Constitution specifies that the elected body of county government all run at the same time every four years. Municipalities are different. Municipalities, the elected officials have staggered terms, and boards of education have staggered terms. But the Maryland Constitution provides that county elected officials run all at the same time. I think it historically has something to do with throw the bums out.
I really don't see, you know, a lot of problem with that. Most people's going to be on the Board of Education and want to run for it. It's going to do a little research and has been following the board for some period of time, as probably Mr. Kilmer and Ernie has. You know, they're new, but they weren't new faces. You know, we've seen them before. You know, so they've been keeping up with what's going on, so it's not like they're walking in there completely blind.
Mr. Palmer?
At a recent meeting with one of our new state senators, and this is a clarification on your point of staggered, she was very specific about retaining some members during the first vote, and she had mentioned three the first time and four the second time. And she was, like I say, very specific to retain that knowledge about what was going on in that school board. So I don't know if it's going to take Mr. Baker longer or not, but as a point of what they vote on up there, they would be looking at that point, I believe, real close.
Thank you. Well, touching base on that as well, with what Councilman Kilmer said, with the appointments from the executive, you could maintain that consistency standard. Yes, I mean, the executive appointment could be the link that keeps the older members on the board.
Do we need someone to find out who's up for reappointment soon, today, or look into it later on?
I don't worry about that today.
It shouldn't be based on personality. I mean, I kind of like not knowing. That's what we're making this choice, so...
Well, I'm talking about dates. You're talking about when vacancies might be filled. Well, they could still fill them anyway. Any other comments? Okay, we'll take a straw vote if we could on a hybrid, a hybrid school board, starting with Councilman Hall.
Yes.
Councilman Kilmer?
Let's, yes.
Yes.
Well, since the majority already voted, yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
I agree, so that would be unanimous. Mr. Baker, if you could move that forward?
Do we just decide on staggered terms?
No.
Hybrid. Not staggered, hybrid, yeah.
Okay.
And when the letter goes up, make sure it says unanimous. Council unanimous.
Did we agree on all signatures on the letter, or just one?
That's what I understood.
All signatures will be on the letter. Would we want to include the executive's signature on that?
Sure.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Sounds good.
Does he need to send an accompanying letter, or the same letter?
All right, thank you very much. I really appreciate public input today. It's very beneficial.
Yeah.
Finally. Again. And thank you, John, for having us.
Thank you for spearheading it very much. We have 12:10 right now. I would like to ask, if we could, Mr. Roser?
Steve's coming in so early, he doesn't know, he won't know how to act.
He's actually before somebody else.
Yeah, it's a banner day for internal auditing. My name is Steve Roser, and I'm your internal auditor, and I want to thank the council for seeing me today. I have two administrative matters that should not take much of your time. The first of which is the concerns, our annual audit plan. As you're aware, the impact fee grants audit is part of the FY15 Annual Audit Plan. The scope and objectives for the audit were supplied in your brief book. They may seem necessarily vague to allow flexibility, and we, of course, plan to perform a risk assessment on this audit as we do on all audits. We suspect a low probability of mismanagement due mainly to the planning and zoning reporting that's taken place to date. If we proceed with this audit, we will review that to make sure. The main thing is the program effectiveness can be assessed through surveys and interviews with participants. At least, that's the plan at this stage. You have some sample questions there, and they're just preliminary brainstorming-type sample questions that we've come up with so far. And the evaluation will, more likely than not, have subjective components. I know there's interest out there to get the objective plus or minuses for this particular, this particular program, whether or not it was successful. But I think any audit that you're going to see at this point on this thing is going to have a subjective component. At this point, we're seeking council direction on the future of this audit. We want to make sure we have a useful product, and we do not want to waste resources on a project that will change materially in the future. So what I'm looking for is your input on whether or not you think this is a worthwhile project to keep going, the timing of it. Do we need to do it right away? Is this something that we, you want to put on the back burner, or would you like to change it or throw it out? Counsel comments?
The question came up before, to help with this, is if we're not going to do this anymore, that is, we're not going to have a grant program going forward fashioned in the way this one was fashioned, do we need an audit on it? I think part of it, Steve, is the fact that the council, I can't say at the time, but I thought that, I would have thought that the idea was to see how effective it was, whether or not you really got great numbers for it, or whether it was a failed program. It's one thing to say, you know, someone had told me one time, a business instructor at Salisbury University, a professor, said there was a gentleman who had a restaurant in Texas, and they had him lined up around the block for months and months and months and months. The guy went out of business after two years, and it was simply because of the fact, everybody loved the place, everybody went there, but he was losing money on every plate instead of making money on every plate, and the guy literally went out of business. So the idea here is, are we getting the bang for the buck? Is it working? Everybody wants, you know, everybody wants to see economic development. I just would like to see the metrics, whereas we know exactly how successful this program is. Coming, Joe, or anyone else?
I agree.
So I thought that that might be the charge, as far as the audit is concerned, to get to the nuts and bolts of it and to say, hey, you're not going to believe this, but it's even better than we thought, you know, as far as the impact is concerned. I just felt that randomly throwing it out there as a grant is a great idea, and Joe and I were pushing it years and years and years ago, but we would like to know as a guideline for future reference.
Well, if we're, the grants are done with, right?
As far as I'm, I know, yes.
Okay, they're done with, so now we're talking about putting a moratorium on. So are you going to audit the grants we've done? Or are you going to just audit the building business for the next year, what we do in the future? I mean, what were we going to audit here, I guess, that's?
That's the question. A couple of things there. I would like to put before you, as you say, exactly what this particular project got Wycomico County. There's great difficulty in doing that. There are going to be subjective components unless we're allowed to look at every single contractor's P and L compared to historical P and Ls for the projects that they completed. I don't think we'll be privy to that information. We may be. The second thing, well...
I ain't going to give it to you.
Are we going to be able to build a relationship with these contractors to dig that far into their books as a county?
Or subpoena.
He just gave them five grand.
Okay.
I would gladly tell you, every dime I spent at every store, and exactly down to the penny of what was done, I would never have even a question.
And how much time is you, I guess, as a contractor, would be willing to take away from other projects to devote to something like that?
Depends how long that might take. I mean, every contractor's not going to build a house where he doesn't have all of his books.
Why don't you, why don't you survey some of the contractors and just do an audit on one or two properties and say, say what we gained out of this, one or two grants, because we basically probably...
That goes back to the subjective component. We can do that, that's what I was proposing. The other thing, limitation you have, is this office. I'm still a one-note samba here. I don't have a staff, and it's going to be difficult for me to crunch the numbers for 72 contractors.
That's a really good, I'm sorry, because I did not ever, I mean, personally, I never had the intention of having you...
No, I didn't.
Audit 74.
I said one or two.
Are you doing a sample?
Sample, yeah.
Okay.
Now, you can cut the, you have some questions on here for your survey.
Right.
You can cut off the question about would an extension of the program affect your decision to build more homes, because we are extending the program, basically.
Okay.
Right.
Tell us what you look for.
This is on the back of...
And again, this is just some brainstorming questions that I came up with to give you some idea of where I was going with an audit, and this is not by any means cast in stone.
Now, if I can ask, what will doing this take you away from doing? What is being pushed back by you to do this?
Actually, this is part of the audit plan, so nothing is being pushed back, as long as we keep the audit to the scope and objectives you see outlined here. And, you know, it's part of the plan.
I would say the only, the only thing that you might find is that the executive had previously said he wanted to have a moratorium placed on impact fees, and I would certainly suggest that we address that concern after Steve gives us his report on how successful it's been.
Steve, why don't you just send a letter to, can we get a letter to the 74 people and ask them if any of them would like to participate in?
That's what I'm suggesting, yeah. We send the questionnaire out, we get some preliminary questions, and then the last question is, are you willing to sit down with the internal auditor to discuss it further? We take those people, we do a more in-depth survey, and then from that, we write an opinion on the project based on the information that we've gathered.
But I wouldn't do 74, I'd do two or three.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, if all of them volunteer, we'll say all alone.
But if you send out 74, and you might get, I'm guessing off the top of my head, you might get 20 surveys back, maybe two or three of them might be willing to sit down and talk to you. That would be my guess.
Yeah, that's good.
I'm not getting any back.
And one of your survey questions should certainly be, would you mind sharing your P and L statements? And it would be anonymously.
Yes.
Question for Wayne. Was there going to be something from the executive coming about a moratorium on impact fees?
We knew we had this on the agenda, and it was premature to, I think, to bring something to, put it on the agenda before we'd met with Steve as to what his process was.
Okay, I was just, because I know we'd heard about it before, so I didn't know what the...
That's why I was saying before, I think we do need to get something back from the internal auditor as far as the success of the grants, to know where we're headed.
So what I'm hearing here, then, if I'm correct, is we go ahead with the audit, more or less based on the scope and objectives you have before you. We'll send out the questionnaire, we'll try to pin down a few folks, and get more specifics on...
Everyone okay? Any questions?
I guess, I guess, I understand what you're trying to do here, to audit. Basically, what they're going to tell you is they were able to either make $5,000 more on the house or sell the house for $5,000 less. They took $5,000 out of their expense of building the homes, is what they're going to tell you. You know, maybe they got to lower the price of the house, and they got to build a house, because like Mr. Messick said last week, he had one house, or two weeks ago, he had one house, that this $5,000 definitely played a part into it.
Well, we're not really trying to see if they made or lost any money. We're trying to see the impact in the community, correct?
Right, I understand that.
Well, that, again, that's why I'm here. I'm looking for that direction.
But I don't know what we're going to gain by.
Well, to know how much maybe we pulled in through sales taxes, through, you know, ancillary costs.
Yeah, okay, all right.
How many jobs we gave. How many people did you hire? You know, the questionnaire's going to have that kind of stuff on it.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Did you order materials from local or regional, you know, distributors and so on? That's the kind of questions I'm looking at, and that's not going to give you hard numbers, but it's going to give you a feel for how the project, where, you know, where it landed, hopefully.
I mean, we know how much money it costs to build a house, and from that, we could probably take all the records as far as what the sales taxes might be, or the sales proceeds might have been, but I'd just like to see something more specific that, you know, I understand.
More tangible.
Yeah, more tangible, yeah.
Okay, I'll do, well, I'll do my best to get you that. Okay. Second thing is, the, as you are aware, that the audit reports that we produce are posted on the county website upon approval by the council, and it was brought to my attention that it may be instructive to include, by President Cannon, it may be approved to, it may be instructive to include follow-up documentation as long as we have the audit reports. We put these audit reports out there, they all have findings. It's my practice to follow up on these findings until either they're resolved or management accepts the risk, which is in the standards for internal auditing. Documentation, usually in the form of memos, is presented to council to keep track of these follow-ups as they come along. We've worked with IT to devise a way to include the follow-up memos and other document links in outline form on the website, so we will take a particular audit and have the links underneath of it indented for the follow-ups. We checked the archives and found, I think, about 27 documents we would like to include. All of these documents were discussed with previous council, but most current council members haven't seen them, so that's why I've dug them all back out and presented them to you at this point. And so, to that end, I'll be glad to answer any questions new or returning council members may have about any of these memos, and I'm also seeking your permission to include these on the internal auditing section of the county website.
Any comments?
Go ahead and put them on.
Thanks for bringing it up.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to, I guess, recess for lunch. We'll be back at 1 o'clock for a meeting with the Board of Education, and followed by a closed work session. Okay?